Education. Roll call, please.
Blake Broughton.
Here.
Meredith Cole. John Kern.
Here.
Bruce Schweitzer.
Here.
Nick Foskis.
Here.
Susan Norman.
Here.
Darlene Bailey.
Here. We have a quorum. Adopt, amend the agenda?
Move to approve the agenda as presented.
Second. All in favor?
Is that worrying different?
No. Thank you. We have no public comment tonight. Our school spotlight is Carney Elementary. Mr. Masker? He just gave the one second.
The latecomer, I think, coming in.
Okay. We have Mr. Masker and we have Ms. Sarah Kimmel and Ms. Samantha Overall and a lot of students. Welcome.
Hi, Ms. Masker, Carney Elementary Principal. So, first thing I want to do is acknowledge a couple of teachers I have here with me. Sam Overall and Sarah Kimmel. They are SLP and LMC teachers at our building, but a huge part in some of the leadership opportunities we provide for our students. So, I'm going to continue to stall just for a couple of minutes. One of the things they're going to be talking about today is our STAR PBIS program. It is our building behavioral foundation, right? So, our students all know what STAR is and that drives a lot of the way we do things in our building. Another thing that we're going to be talking about today is our broadcasting club. So, our broadcasting club puts broadcasts out to our entire building. It has become a little bit of a family event on Fridays. Teachers build this into their schedules and kind of focus their morning meetings and starting the day off right on Friday. So, they're going to talk about that a little bit as well.
Do you want me to help you stall? I got questions. How many kids are in your program?
I forgot. Nine?
Any other questions about broadcast or student leadership at KE?
You guys have like a format or what do you do? What's that look like?
Anybody can talk? Go ahead, Raylan.
So, the things that we do are we have anchors, we have weather and birthdays to celebrate those, we have upcoming events, we have cooking, and we have Tiny Talk.
What's Tiny Talk? That sounds fun.
Tiny Talk is a thing where we ask kindergartners and first graders questions and we want to hear like the funny responses.
How long does it take to make one episode?
Uh, like three days.
Wow.
Including Wednesday.
What part do you do in the broadcasting?
Uh, we normally switch every week, but most of the time I do upcoming events or weather or birthdays.
Is that your favorite?
Yeah, you beat me to the punch. Nice. That is your favorite?
Yeah.
Do you get the weather right? Do you get the weather right?
Oh, yeah. Most...
You've got a job coming up when you get over there.
Exactly.
Yeah.
So, what grades are involved in this?
There is fourth and fifth grade and we are adding third grade.
Whoa, alright.
How many years have you done it?
This is my first year.
This is your first year? It started this year, okay.
It's everybody's first year.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
So, one of the things we're focusing on at Carney Elementary is giving students their voice, helping them find their voice. So, here's some KE students doing that.
Good evening, Carney School Board of Education. Here at KE, we have a building-wide expectation known as STAR. STAR holds students accountable to be safe, trustworthy, an active learner, and to show respect.
We say the STAR pledge every Monday to start the week. We can also earn Starbucks whenever we follow his expectations. Starbucks is money you get from different teachers for showing STAR behavior. At KE, we have a card called the STAR card. We can buy, we can spend our money on different items from the STAR card. For example, we can buy a sit-by phone pass or write in pen for a day.
Now, we will ask some students at KE about what STAR means to them.
What does it mean to be a safe student?
Help people when they're hurt.
Thank you.
What's your name?
Kinley.
What does STAR mean to you?
Um, stay safe and help people when they're running and stuff.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
What's your name?
Claire.
What does it mean to be a STAR student?
Being kind to everyone.
Thank you.
What's your name?
Maverick.
What does STAR mean to you?
Treat people the way you want to be treated and show kindness.
Thank you. What's your name?
Major.
What it, what does it mean to be a STAR?
Sitting with girls, applesauce, and listening to the teacher.
Thank you.
What's your name?
J.C. Finley.
What does being a STAR mean to you?
Um, an active learner and behaving in class and listening.
Thank you.
What's your name?
Daisy.
What does it mean to be respectful?
Helping out the teacher.
Thank you. What's your name? What does being a STAR mean to you?
Helping people, like holding the door.
Thank you. What is your name?
Addie.
What does being a STAR to you?
Um, being trustworthy and being kind.
Thank you. What is your name?
My name is McKenna.
What does STAR mean to you?
STAR means to me that you're listening to your teacher and following directions at all times.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ellie. Ellie is a part of KE's broadcasting club. They started this club in September at the beginning of the school year. They... They meet Mondays and Thursdays and the broadcast goes out on Fridays. They have made 12 broadcasts since the beginning of the school year. Uh, they've upgraded a few things such as getting microphones to improve the sounds of their voices. They also help each other in segments to succeed. The segments they do are weather, birthdays, upcoming events, special stories, and everyone's favorite segment, Tiny Talk.
Here's a highlight reel of all the good times in KE STV.
Hi, KE.
I'm Adrian.
Hey, Adrian, what is your favorite fall drink?
Uh, probably hot cocoa.
Me too.
Thank you, Adrian. Now, moving on to weather. Today is 59 and sunny and then it is going to be warmer on Saturday at 65 and it will go all the way to 43 on Turkey Day. It's going to be a cold day on the Turkey Trot. That's all for the weather. Bye.
Thanks, Tucker and Easton. First, let's talk about staff birthdays this week. Happy birthday to Ms. Pickle, Ms. Elam, and Ms. Beaver. Ms. Beaver had a very special birthday because it was her 50th birthday. I hope she had an amazing day. Now, switching to students. Happy birthday to Books, Betsy, and Elijah. Happy birthday to all of you.
Some popular Halloween costumes. This year, the most popular Halloween costume is Barbie. Obviously, the second most popular Halloween costume will be Kim.
Thanks, Elliot and Whitley. Hey, did you know that the author that wrote the book With No Rules, Brian Gilhern, is coming for kindergarten, first and second grade?
I'm here with Mrs. Shell, Ms. Pinnell, and Ms. Bryley. And we're going to ask them how long it took them to get ready this morning. So, Mrs. Shell, how long did it take you to get ready?
So, I've been working like all weekend on this amazing beard, obviously. So, yeah, it took me like three days.
Ms. Pinnell, how long did it take you to get ready?
I woke up like this.
I'm Adrian and I'm here with Abram. Abram, can you tell us a little about your outfit?
Well, basically, my mom just told me to wear this.
Good morning, KE. This is Tucker with a special report. There has been a crime in the office. Ihiro has gone missing. The secretaries are losing feelings in their fingers.
Welcome back to asking tiny humans tiny questions with a tiny microphone. This is Tucker.
And Easton.
What is your name?
Um, Blaze Alexander-Twack.
Thank you. Uh, how does Santa get down the chimney?
Um, because he from, he slipped on a banana.
What is your name?
Trey.
What sounds do you think groundhogs make?
Oink.
Thank you.
Till next time.
I'm Olivia.
And I'm Adrian.
Signing off.
Do you have any questions about STAR or about the broadcasting club?
I love the tiny microphones. So cool. It's fun.
Do you guys meet during the day or is this before or after school?
We, so, uh, on Monday, we come in the mornings. On Wednesday, we come during RTI. And, uh, on Thursday, we come in the mornings also.
That's a lot of time. And where are the bloopers? Like what's, where do all those go?
They got deleted. Because we didn't really like them.
Thank you all so much for coming.
Oh, yeah.
Mr. Masker, it's nice to know you still have Starbucks at Carney Elementary. That's been a longtime tradition. I still have found those in my basement in wallpapers and stuff, so that's awesome.
Don't let that get out. I have a middle schooler that'll want to go back.
Yeah.
Starbucks at Carney Elementary?
Okay, next we have superintendent's report. Dr. Miller?
This week, we had Russ Tuttle from the Stop Trafficking Project come to educate parents and students regarding online dangers children face. This presentation was initially suggested actually by one of our parents on the safety committee in order, in effort to keep our students safe. Mr. Tuttle's presentation is pretty simple. It's to raise awareness of the escalation of predatory online behavior and to educate students on how perpetrators exploit their vulnerabilities. On January 8th, he made the initial three-hour presentation to staff. The feedback was overwhelmingly positive and we recognized the necessity of expanding his message to families and students. This week, approximately 170 parents, guardians, and community members came to hear his message. We hope Mr. Tuttle's presentation will serve as an on-ramp for parents and guardians to discuss the issue with their children, free from fear, shame, or blame, and empower adults to supervise the children's online lives. Yesterday and today, Mr. Tuttle followed up with age-appropriate presentations to our students. His message focused on awareness of warning signs and appealing to the hero inside each student to be brave and speak up if they or a friend are targeted. Mr. Tuttle hopes to publish a video in the near future so that his information can be more broadly shared with parents and we intend to share that out with a broader community once we receive that. Switching gears, want to talk a little bit about student activities this week. Congratulations to our swim team who traveled to St. Louis to participate in the state meet. Anna Williams is the first male or female diver to make it to the podium at an all-state level with a seventh-place finish. The boys wrestling team traveled to Belton High School this past Friday and Saturday to compete in the Class III District IV Tournament. The boys did a fantastic job and finished the tournament as the Class III District IV Team Champions. Best of luck to our boys and girls wrestlers as they head off to state this week and we also wish the best to our basketball teams as they kick off their district tournament next week.
Thank you. Next, we have the consent agenda.
Move that the consent agenda be approved as presented.
Second. All in favor? Opposed? Thank you. Okay. Next, we have information items. Financials.
Just have a couple of points to share. As of, at this point in time, we have received over 90, 95% of our budgeted property taxes, which is good news for us. And across the district, all our budget managers are working hard to enter their purchase orders for this fiscal year's purchases by March 1st. Did anyone have any questions on any of the reports in your packet?
Thank you, Ginger. Bond update?
Good evening. Is this on? Can you hear me? Okay. Um, my name's Megan Masterson. I'm with DLR Group and I'm part of the design team along with Newkirk Novak that is working on the four additions and renovations to all the elementary schools. And what you see on the screen now is a rendering of the proposed new entrance at Southview Elementary. And what that entrance is doing is adding additional space for the administration, additional room for students, and then also a new secure vestibule. The highlighted area is the addition. You can see that is the new entry. There's going to be some modification to the bus loop and then there is also the admin. This is a heat map kind of showing the different areas that will be touched in the renovation. The green areas are the existing collaborative areas. Those will all be revamped to encourage more project-based learning. All of the kindergarten rooms will receive new carpeting. The administration area will be renovated and also added on to. And then this is a programmatic floor plan showing all the different programs within the school. So, we are increasing the sped areas in the building and we will have, and there'll be a DLC in this space, there'll be additional resource rooms to serve the students, and there'll be additional resource areas for teachers. There'll be a teacher collaborative space, there'll be a teacher workroom, and there are flex areas that include space for both teachers and students. And then here is an axon of what that addition will look like on the front. You can see that there is a secure vestibule as you walk in and what that entails is currently the elementary schools, the secure vestibule is you get buzzed in, you enter the office, you get your badge, and then you walk into the building. All of the new, all the renovations at the elementary schools will have, you will still get buzzed into the vestibule, but you will not enter the building. There will be a sliding window similar to what's at Carney Middle School to pass over your driver's license and then you get let in after all your credentials have been cleared. So, that's an extra level of protection. We're also adding a film to the glazing for if there is an instance where we need to have that additional security for the glass. The reception area is the same kind of setup and then we have, as you can see, there's social worker, therapist, there's a teacher collaboration, there's the DLC, and then we do have the staff workroom and breakroom. So, for those of you that are familiar with Southview, there's a long corridor that connects you from the public area of the building back to the classroom pods and it's just kind of a tall blank area. So, we are going to liven that up a little bit. We're going to add some lighting to it. We're going to add some ceiling baffles. We're also going to incorporate some color on the walls, some tack boards, so that each grade level can display their work along that corridor and kind of bring all that learning into and share it into that space. So, one big move on all of the elementary schools is incorporating collaborative spaces and these collaborative spaces are based on these archetypal categories. There's the cave, campfire, watering hole, laboratory, and mountaintop, and they're all different phases of collaboration. So, the cave is kind of that focus area. The campfire is gathering around, working with others. The watering hole is kind of where you share your thoughts with your peers. Laboratory is the hands-on, get dirty, explore. And the mountaintop is where you get up and you present your findings and you present your work. So, you can see here, the way Southview is set up is there's five classrooms that surround the collaborative space. And so, we're not removing any walls. That space is staying the same. What we're doing is we're making it very intentional. So, you can see that the cave is more of the focused learning area. Watering hole, you can see that there's some tables and chairs. It's more of a collaborative space. We will have casework that will be not only for storing student work, but also housing the collaborative teaching pieces. And then the mountaintop will be sharing the work. There's going to be pinup boards, there's going to be marker boards, there's a monitor that's going to be mounted on the wall for both student and teacher presentations, and then there will be a green screen in this space also. So, the items that you see in this collaborative space are going to be consistent across all of the schools. And then here's a rendering of what that will look like. You can see we have the casework that serves both the students and teachers. We have, the green screen will be like projector screen. It'll come down from the ceiling when they're using it and they can pull it up when it's not in use. There'd be a TV monitor in that room and there's many different types of seating to furnish all different kinds of learning. That's all I have. Any questions?
That security, is that, you said that's going on every elementary?
Every elementary will have that same type of security. Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so I'm here with good news tonight. And I don't know, do I have anything up here for this or?
No.
Okay, so in your packet for approval later is the bids for the project that she just went over. So, we took bids, uh, January 23rd and John set out a challenge to get good bid coverage on this one. So, got good results. Eighty-four bidders across this project. We averaged four and a half bids per scope, which is really good. Got good pricing along with it. There were several scopes that we had six and seven bids on, so feel really good about that. And, um, project came in under budget, which is good. So, um, there is a couple of early packages that we did that you previously approved for the air handler unit replacement that'll happen in Southview and then the steel piece. And so, what I did is I put a summary in there. I packaged all those up together with this remaining package piece, so you get an idea of what the Southview project is worth. So, total in, it's worth $4.5 million and then we also bid some work at the middle school. There's several classrooms there that we're pulling out the HVAC and we're putting new ones in this summer. So, they've been problematic for a long time. So, again, all of these came in under budget. If approved later, then the plan would be to start these early March. And when I say these, we're going to start the addition on Southview early March because we need to finish by August, so we got to get a little bit of a jumpstart on the summer. So, we'll fence everything off, make sure everything's safe. We'll kind of rework the entry a little bit, but we've got a great plan for that. So, we'll start building the addition in March, April, and May, and then all the interior work obviously happens as soon as school gets out and we'll, we'll be open for school. On the, so since this, I mean, excuse me, the, where you're doing the work is the entry. How are you guys working around that? Yeah, good question. So, we're going to put, we've got a special company that is going to come in and we're going to build a kind of a protective tunnel that's got plywood on all sides, lighting on the inside. So, we're kind of going to build right next to this tunnel, so we got to get a good, safe place for kids to go in. So, it's going to come 20 or 30 feet outside the building, so everybody's going to enter in through that, same entry doors they're using right now, but that just ensures that everybody's safe and then we'll have fence around the addition and it'll kind of be separated off. We've got to tweak the bus loop a little bit first. We're going to do that because buses got to turn around before we can start any construction. So, we feel like we've got a really good plan. It's going to look a little different, but this is what we do every day. We got to work on active schools and you can't finish it all in the summer, so you got to start a little bit. Yeah. So, that's this project that's up for approval later tonight. And then, working with the DLR team, since the last time we met, we've done estimates on the other three elementary schools. They're early stages of design there and we've got projects that are within budget, so feel good about that. They've kind of moved on and go into the next phase of that design, so that's going to continue to develop for the next couple of months and then probably bid summer-ish and then start those projects in the fall is the big target, so. So, DLR does a great job of designing really cool buildings, but I know that that's why we've got you, Ben, to value engineer them a little bit. Have you guys been through that process on all of these as well? I want to make sure DLR knows, you guys do amazing work, right, Kevin? Right, okay. So, but at the same level, you know, we need to be paying attention to the cost of the project. And that's where you go. So, have you guys had those conversations and discussed? Good question. We spent quite a bit of time in January doing that very thing because there's a lot of needs that the district has, right? A lot of things that if we can spend money right on the elementary schools, maybe it could free it up to do, fill some of the other needs. So, we went through that exercise with the district staff and DLR team. We kind of looked at the drawings and then went through 20 different alternates potentials and the team kind of made a plan with what we think we want to do that fits within the budget and then at the next phase of design, we'll do another estimate, options again, let everybody look at the current numbers, so that process will kind of continue until the very end. So, for our new board members, just so you guys know, like, we hired Ben as a construction manager at risk, which, but his job basically is to be on our behalf when we're doing all of these projects, where in the past, we'd have to have a person that'd be dedicated to that. That's the value, like Ben brings a lot of value for us as a district to make sure that we're stretching those pennies like teachers stretch pennies, right? And so, that's, just want to make sure everybody understands like what that value looks like and why we hired him a couple of years ago when we did the bond. And I may be, am I underselling in your opinion?
No, and Ben and DLR have both sharpened pencils and really come back to the district with what are options that we can look at for alternates. Again, we know that we're in rising or escalating costs for construction, so we're mindful of that, so we really appreciate their work.
And when I say challenge the bid coverage, I mean...
And when I say challenge the bid coverage, I mean, that's, that's Ben's work because that's not normal. Not right now. Because most people are filled up, and it's normally one or two. So he did a good job on this.
There is, we've got a team that does a lot of recruiting, a lot of phone calls, a lot of, you know, trying to talk people into coming after these jobs. And sometimes on a, this is a smaller project in the school construction world. The stuff we're going to do here next fall is a lot bigger, maybe more attractive, but we had a lot of people putting in the effort and gained the interest, and that's why your project came in on budget. Because the more competition you get, the lower your price goes. So we feel really good about that.
We'll continue to monitor that for the other three big projects. Unfortunately, we have a little bit of interest earnings in case, you know, we have some difficulty maintaining within that scope.
I just like that we try to stretch pennies like teachers. So maybe.
Yeah.
Any other questions for me?
Thank you, Ben.
Thank you.
Will we communicate to Southview parents?
Yeah, so once we get a little bit further, we'll start to communicate with, create a communication timeline for staff first, and then to parents.
Okay. And summer school there?
No, we can work around that.
Okay.
Also, DLR, thanks for those great views of what we're getting to have in the collaborative spaces and how important that is to us. I want, I just want, I know how hard you guys work. So I wanted to tell you thank you for all those drawings. When you get to see it, you know, it changes, you know, it's easy looking on a 2D piece of paper, but getting to see the visuals really helps, so thank you for that.
We have a, excuse me, a written program evaluation for safety, emergency response. Any board members have any questions about that? Officer Kirkland and Mr. Nolan, thank you for your work on that. Appreciate it. Program evaluation for career in tech education.
Hello, how's it going? Ryan, if you want to go to slide two there. Okay, so I put all this together, it's all in your written report. I'm really not going to go over and read it, everything that is on there, just because you guys have already looked at it, you can read it. So I'm just going to kind of talk about different points here. With slide two, if you look at it, we have added our education internship, our Carney internship, our client-connected projects to this evaluation process, just because that's the real-world learning program that we're in, and how those students, a lot of our students are going to be gaining market value assets. Next slide is some long-term goals. We have, actually, the next two slides are long-term goals. If you look at the first bullet point, we are out ahead of any other district in the Kansas City area with our lofty goal of trying to get every student a market value asset by 2025. We're trending well towards that number, but that's something we'll probably talk about as this presentation goes on, just exactly where we're at there. So that is our goal, to hit that by, with our juniors this year graduating next spring. With this other long-term goal, the first and third bullet points will require additional sections. With this going forward, we really would like to have a full-time internship teacher to offer students more flexibility. We'd also like to have a client-connected project class. Right now, we have a Carney internship class that Alyssa Stevens teaches. That's sixth and seventh hour. We had good numbers this year. I'll talk about our numbers for next year. Mindy Samuelson started our educational internship class, which a lot of you came and talked to those kids, and that's very much appreciated. And that program is absolutely exploding, which is a great thing, right? It's a really good thing, but that's things we need to talk about here quick. Short-term goals. Stacy Holtzclaw has been instrumental in working with our current staff and trying to get our kids MBAs, working with them to offer client-connected project activities during the school day, during core classes, core subject areas, not core classes, but core subject areas, lining up those clients. And our teachers have been unbelievable of taking advantage of that and jumping in with both feet. And it's really cool to see things that we got going on there with that client-connected project. One thing that we do not allow is teachers who have end-of-course, so our English II, our biology, our algebra II, our American government classes, if it's an end-of-course class, we're not offering client-connected projects in those classes because we want those kids to concentrate and do well on our assessments at the end. So that's kind of a balance of where we're at, of how we are trying to keep our lofty standards of what we got with our test scores that come in, and also raising the bar to get every kid an MBA and a real-world learning opportunity. That's something that we're going to probably discuss as we move forward. Plus Delta, so plus, there's some things listed up there, but we are working with the Kaufman Foundation. I'm working with the Kaufman Foundation and the Principals Fellowship. In November, we were asked to host a regional tour, and so we probably had 15 different principals and directors from the greater Kansas City area who came to Carney. And our kids and staff got to present to those, to those individuals on the cool things that we're doing. And it was really cool to see them look and ask questions, and our kids to get excited, and to present to them, and our teachers to get excited. Mindy was in that, in that presentation, talking about her educational internship class. And it was just, it was really neat to see and very well received by those people. I've also been asked by the Kaufman Foundation to present an online presentation about how we have adjusted our schedules, how we have created flexible time to get these kids real-world learning opportunities. So I got to present on that, so that was, that was fun too. So definitely a lot of positive things occurring with this program. Some of the deltas, some of the things we need to work on. Like I said, our Carney educational internship program is absolutely exploding. Right now, you have?
Nine?
She has nine. Next year, first round, we have 36 signed up for that group. That's their first elective choice. If you add the second elective choice, now we're up to 43. Our Carney internship program, we have 23 signed up for next year. This year, we had 26, but we also have 11 as a second choice. Now we're up to 37. So now we have two teachers who are doing this program, but now they're having 36 and 40 kids in a classroom. I didn't know Mindy was going to be here when I was going to talk to her, great things about her. But it's hard to take a teacher out of that program to do two hours of an educational internship program, when she's an absolutely fantastic English teacher. And one of our reasons why we have such fantastic scores in English II is because of what she does. So those are things that we are, we're, yes, it's awesome, it's great, but we're almost to a max of, I don't know how many more opportunities pass of what we're offering right now that we're going to be able to offer our students in this without getting more staff or reworking our staff to figure out how they go in there. But Mindy went last summer, and she took some classes and got all, so now her kids can get all the college credits. She had to go out and get a fax degree, right? She had to go out and get a family and consumer arts science degree just to be able to offer that college credit. So there's definitely some things that, as this program moves forward, as we're reaching that goal of 2025 of getting all of our kids an MBA, that we're going to have to kind of look at and go for. But overall, the program is very strong. It's really cool to see our kids get excited for it, our staff to get excited for it, our staff to try new things, and our kids to jump right in. So I think we're in a good spot. We just kind of have to figure out how we're going to navigate moving forward.
Hey, Andy, I have a question. On the CTE lab that we have behind the primary gym that we use, is that, I mean, like, are we utilizing that maxed, maxed out as well, kind of like, you know, with what Mindy's doing?
We, yes. Right now, we have a biology teacher who's teaching two hours of intro to ag. We need, Erica needs help. She needs help to be able to, I think we had, we have one ninth-grade intro to ag class, and we had to turn away like 45 kids who wanted to take that class at the ninth grade level, just because we don't have anybody to teach it over there. So that's, it's being used on a regular basis. Erica uses it, and then Shane comes down and uses it as well, but it can hold more kids.
Okay.
Other questions?
And ag isn't the only one of those programs that is kind of in that same situation, so.
Yeah, you have a couple, don't you? Like, you have two or three with, you know, with Mindy's, what hers is doing, her class is doing and growing, and then, you know, the ag department, and then also the?
Our digital and visual arts are absolutely exploding, and they get, they can get client-connected projects. Angie Carmack just does a fantastic job of getting kids involved with local businesses. I don't know if you saw this in Mitch's presentation today, all those kids that were standing by, all those, those were all designed by Angie Carmack's kids. They all designed that, and then they put those, put those together. So the schools use our, use our kids, and I mean, it's, they do a fantastic job.
Our goal for 2025 with MBAs, what do you think we're going to hit at 2024?
We're trending this year to get 75.
75?
So I would say we're going to do everything we can to hit that goal of 100. I mean, it's a graduation requirement, so I mean, we're going to be working, Stacy's doing a good job now of identifying those kids that don't have an MBA and are starting to work for one. I have a freshman daughter, and so does Bree. Drew the other day told me, she goes, Dad, I'm going to get two my freshmen here, so I'm done. Like, you go, girl. Get it done. That's fine with me. So, I mean, they, the younger kids know that if they want to get that platinum diploma, they have to have two MBAs. And she's not thinking yet, oh wait, I can get one with college credit, right? She's thinking about all the cool things. So Dr. Miller talked about Rest Huddle's presentation. Stacy Holtzclaw and Jennifer offered an opportunity up for freshmen to come up with an idea of how we're going to do daycare. And my daughter is one of those that did that presentation, and they had 10 kids that got daycare, and that's when we have groups come in and families now, they have a plan in place on how they're going to receive kids and what they're going to do with it. It was kind of, I got to sit in as the administrator, but then I wasn't going to go because Drew was presenting, and then she's like, Dad, I want you to go. And I'm like, so I got to see it from both sides, right? I got to see my, my daughter doing something really cool, and then I got to see the project and the, and the great things that is coming from it too, so.
Awesome. Props to your staff, to your staff too, for going out and getting another degree just too. I think that just speaks volumes.
And it's, it's not just Mindy. I mean, it's, it's everybody. I mean, just trying new things. We have a new sociology teacher this year, and the old teacher did a client-connected project, and he's jumped in, and he's got two of them. I mean, he's going, they just went on a field trip down to the city and looking at City Mission Union and how they can help them out and be more productive down there. So our kids are not just doing Carney things, they're going down and hitting, hitting city things too. So it's pretty exciting.
Yep, very cool.
That's awesome.
Awesome.
Thank you so much, Andy.
Awesome, thank you.
Action items. Southview bid.
Move to approve bids for Southview addition, renovation, and middle school northwest classrooms. HVAC is presented.
Second. All in favor? Opposed? Thank you. Amendment to the DLR agreement.
Move to approve amendments to the professional service agreements with DLR group as presented.
Second. All in favor? The panorama agreement?
Move to approve renewal agreement, service order with panorama as presented.
Second. All in favor?
Hold on.
Discussion?
Discussion. I'd like to have some. Is this the only option that we have is panorama as our option for this service that we're providing?
So, Jennifer, correct me if I'm wrong, so panorama, so there's two pieces of what panorama offers. There's the survey side, where we get good information on how students are belonging, but there's also the data warehouse piece that ties in all sorts of assessment information so staff can look at a glance how to make good decisions for kids. And that is more unique. Do I think there's other survey tools out there? Yes, but I think the data warehouse piece is very critical to what staff do on a day-to-day basis. Anything you'd like to add to that?
So have we ever put it out to bid with other options?
Not, not that I'm aware of.
How long have we used panorama?
This is our fourth year.
Fourth.
It's something that's, it's covered through the children's fund and like all the districts that are part of the Clay County Children's Fund.
So only this program is covered under there?
No. I mean, we could ask them to cover it. We could put that in our grant ask, but Clay County Children's Fund, their board feels good about this. They understand that all the districts are using this. So it's, it's a consistent tool that they understand. I'm not saying they wouldn't cover another. I'm sure they would if, you know, if we presented it.
It's a year-long agreement?
Yes.
This extends a little bit longer, doesn't it?
Well, we have asked them to go with our year because it keeps, this is an odd time of year for it to renew, so we are asking them to run it.
So they do a fiscal year versus our school calendar year?
Right, yeah.
So will this come back up again then, July 1st of 2024?
No.
This is extending it to, okay.
If we did get to another system, do we know contractually with the data, if we could transfer it to other systems and the integration as such? Do we know how, because that, to me, is one reason why you wouldn't do it.
We'd, we'd have to look into that and get back to you.
Okay.
Maybe since we haven't bid it out in a hot minute for a few years, we look at that and?
We can, we can investigate what would be, if there are comparable. Differences, right, right. The data warehouse piece, I mean, you get good information off the survey, but the data warehouse piece was something that, when panorama came on the scene, was a little bit unique to panorama. And so we can, we can do a little investigating.
I'm not done. Hold on, I got a couple more. I got, sorry. So panorama picks out, you know, social emotional awareness, you know, in the, in the surveys, right? And we've had this discussion, every time this comes up, I always ask these questions. So this isn't a surprise, shouldn't be a surprise to anybody. Is it the best use of our dollar to go through the social emotional awareness piece? Because as a, as a parent, I'm, I'm pretty involved with my kids, and so I may be the subject matter to ask that question to, but is it really, you know, worth our time and is it, is it, is it, there a valuable piece here?
I do believe there is a valuable piece in. And so just from a social emotional standpoint, with all the mental health concerns that are out there, right? We want to have a good baseline for what is it that students need. Now, academic instruction, that's our core business, but there's a lot of things that get in the way of learning, right? And that's a contributing factor that I think we can help, help students with. So understanding those environmental pieces or those things that are, create barriers for kids, we have services and supports in place that can help with that. So I think asking those questions are important.
Okay.
It catches a lot of kids that would slip through the cracks otherwise. Our social workers, they really dig into this data, and it helps form our small groups, helps determine kids that might need to be referred for individual therapy services.
I believe it's critical to continue to do this type of thing.
I'm not saying that it's not critical. I just want to make sure that it's a valuable piece of what we need to be doing and, you know, and that we don't bid it out to the, you know, and I say bid it out, it's not even about bidding it out. It's about what's the right one for the Carney School District? You know, is that panorama, or we're just doing it because everybody else is doing it? It's one of those things where Carney's kind of a leader. We always tend to be, you know, what's Carney doing? We want to do that too. So it's more of a, is there another? So, it's more of a, is there another program out there? You know, Qualtrics that, you know, Ray brought on, I know I'm not trying to throw Ray under the bus or anything, but he went and did the research, found Qualtrics. It was the best use of the system to basically be good for Carney, and that's what he presented to us. And so, like, that's the only reason I'm asking the question is, is are we hitting the easy button here or are we doing the deep dive work for our district?
We were the first ones to do it.
Panorama?
Yep.
So, they followed you. Well, maybe, what's the next one?
Okay.
That's fine, yeah, no other questions.
Ready to vote? All right, all in favor? opposed? All right, thank you. Board member comments?
For parents that couldn't make the presentation Monday night, is there a video option? Is there a website that they can go to even if it wasn't the Carney?
There is a website, isn't there, Jennifer?
He has a website. He also has an app that, it's a great feature. It lists all these different platforms and streaming, live streaming platforms. And it tells you the pros and cons of each one. I mean, things, I had no idea that there were things on these different platforms that were potentially harmful to kids. He is working right now on a video. He hopes to have it ready in a couple of weeks, so we'll share that as soon as we have that.
It was, it was an excellent presentation, I know. We had some board members who were there and some others that were able to be there. I just happened to be out the next day with a friend whose son-in-law works in homeless shelter-type situations and is a social worker. But I mentioned to her about this, and she goes, "Oh, he would be interested in that." And she texted him, and he said, "Oh, this guy knows what he's talking about. And this is somebody that we really should pay attention to." So, I thought, that was validation to something that I already thought was very good. But people who work with all kinds of kids and a lot of risk that unfortunately, I think sometimes we think we might be immune to, but I don't think that we are, not everyone is. And so, just the awareness that I feel that that creates for us is really, really important. Well, one of the narratives that he really kind of shook for the audience is, it's your straight-A students, it's your kids that are in three sports. It's not just the at-risk students. So, I mean, all students are susceptible to what's happening in an online environment. And so, exploitation of vulnerability could touch any student.
Yeah, where he stated, "It's, I'm not mad at your students, I'm not mad at your technology." To me, because that's your first thing, is the parents get mad at the technology and take things away. But it's more, it's more than that. And I just thought that was phenomenal.
That was very powerful.
Yes, very powerful.
Very powerful, and I don't have a...
Yeah, it would have been awesome to see a little bit more about him before he came in too, just to have some background. I know he's got a website now and he's, more videos online. I'm sure the farther he gets into this, the better that'll be, right? I mean, like, just for the parents that, you know, maybe are a little more, you know, skeptical or a little nervous about sharing that information, it would maybe be a little bit, you know, I'm a naysayer apparently tonight, don't mean to be, but all I'm saying is, you know, there's some other, you know, there's some holes in this that we probably need to clean up.
Well, again, he didn't have access to the video. So, if we ever bring him back in the future, four or five years, right?
We're going to have those, yeah.
Exactly, exactly.
He's really trying to build this up. And he said there for a couple of years, they pretty much had to give this information away. They couldn't even charge, they're just trying to get the word out there, so he's...
And that's the exciting part that I would say, like, I'm glad to hear, I mean, great subject matter to be educated on, because the more, now, the more, you know, the more dangerous, those people become less dangerous, they can't get to you. So, like, I like that.
It was eye-opening to my freshman, she definitely...
Yeah, that's good.
...got home and was like, whoa. And my middle schooler doesn't like cockroaches now, so I...
Ray, do you want to just mention our safety hub?
So, I would encourage all of our parents and guardians to go to www.ksdr1.net/custodio, Q-U-S-T-I-D-I-O. And there is, there are links to both our Custodio app, which they can use to control their child's district-issued device. They also have an opportunity to be able to use that for their own personal devices. There's also a link to our online safety hub that has a TGI Fridays menus worth of items that you can go in and about advice in terms of individual apps, the dangers that are there, the concerns that are there. There's, it's a really great resource that we will continue to push out. It's relatively new for us, but that will be something that we will continue to push out to our community. And it's a great resource that I'd like to see more people utilizing. Thank you.
Thank you, Ray. Any other comments? I know we have a student here working on his merit badge tonight, so good to see you. Get that scout, Eagle Scout project going, okay? Good deal, I'll see you next week.
When the students that we talk to.
Yes, and the students that we talk to, that was great, appreciate that. All right, important dates. Board candidate forum is March 19th. Our next board meeting is March 20th. And then, spring break, the 24th to the 29th. And April 2nd is the election. Ms. Laney's?
Action for closed session to immediately proceed the regular meeting in March, including any record or vote to discuss items and issues allowable under Section 610-021 of the Missouri Sunshine Law.
Second. Roll call, please.
Len Burton.
Yes.
Meredith Cole. John Kern.
Yes.
Bree Switzer.
Yes.
Nick Vaskis.
Yes.
Susan Mooreman.
Yes.
Darlene Bailey.
Yes.
We're adjourned, thank you for coming.